We're calling me to order. We're gonna start our first day with Pastor David Young and we'll be followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we are always humbled by your mercy and your love that you show towards us. And Lord, this morning I do pray for our city council, for our mayor. Pray, Lord, that you will grant it to them wisdom on the decisions that are made and understanding of the needs of our community. Lord, may you receive all the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, living in this world.
Ms. Lee, please call the roll.
Mayor McClintock.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin.
Here.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Pulliam.
Here.
Councilor Robertson.
Present.
Councilor Willers.
With the corner being present, I would proceed, we had no bid openings. Uh, we left this off the, well, not off the agenda, but despite our city family member awards, where we present our city family members who are deserving of getting an award and doing great jobs right here in West Memphis. And I know this is gonna be a little bit funny because he actually thinking he's here to give us an update, but my family member, uh, city award is gonna first go out to Mr. our economic developer, Mr. Philip Sorrell. When you come forward.
Philip been with our city for some time, starting out, I think, with Public Works and City Engineers. Now he's our economic developer. Uh, he has done a great job. He and Mallory working for our city. There's a lot of things that go unsaid, many good things that's come to the city that we can't speak about, but they work hard with long hours to make sure we get the things that we want in West Memphis and on behalf of the city of West Memphis. And I'm mayor, I just wanna say thank you for your hard work and your effort and dedication to West Memphis.
Thank you, Mayor.
You wanna add something?
No, I, I, well, I'll just say that, uh, I know you've only been in office now for a little over two months, but it's been an absolute pleasure. And I can't tell you about the energy enthusiasm that we all have down here and some of the things that we're doing and the direction that we're headed. And I just wanna commend you, Mayor, for, uh, for your leadership and look forward to great things to come.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Hit the two of you to stand together.
You want me to hold this up?
Yeah. I thought you knew each other. One more. All right. And the last one for the day, I'm gonna ask my fellow council member Tracy Cat to come forward as well as Ms. Carrie Priscillo. We're gonna be recognizing Ms. Sandy Shanks. Will you come forward, please?
Sandy Shanks.
Ms. Priscillo is with, uh, she's with the animal control superintendent.
Uh, we'd like to award this honor to Officer Sandy Shanks. She has been with the animal control for over a year now, and she is the epitome of a true animal control officer. She has a passion and a real dedication to educating the community. And, um, in, in one of the ways she demonstrates that, she has spearheaded, uh, an event that will be in, held in, uh, in April, right before Easter. And it's a community outreach event trying to educate our citizens on responsible pet ownership, humane education, and what animal control's all about. And, uh, so it's, I'm very proud to present this to Officer Shanks.
I can just tell you, animal control, previous administration, this administration both have commented then on the work they've done. It's been tremendous. They've done a tremendous amount of good, not just for West Memphis, but they handle a lot of requests outside of our city. And I can't thank Carrie or Stephanie enough.
I would like to say thank you to the animal shelter. I adopted my Pierre from there about sixteen years ago, and I'm sad to say that he is passing away now. And my doctor will not put him to sleep, and I'm thankful because I want to hold on to him as long as I possibly can. He's not suffering, he's just uncomfortable, but I'm gonna miss him so much.
I think the motion is second to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Uh, on the favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? We have no opening, so, uh, we want, we got two, we got ordinance and a resolution that we wanna add, correct?
Uh, we definitely have a ordinance. Uh, I think there may be, I'm not sure about the resolution.
There's a resolution also.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to add?
Yeah, we're gonna need a motion to second to approve the add, the resolution and the ordinance to the agenda.
Make a motion that we add the, uh, resolution and the, uh, the resolution and the ordinance as presented and discussed in the pre-council.
Could you tell us what's, what's the name of it? Which one?
It's, uh, it doesn't have a number, but one of them has to. Yeah, we'll add R2 and O3 to the agenda.
Yeah, I got, I got one of the.
We got a motion to second to add R1, R2 and R3 to the agenda?
R2 and O3.
R2 and O3?
Yep, R2 and O3.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, they are added to the agenda. New business, city attorney.
All right. A resolution approving the selection of an engineering firm and approving a professional services agreement in the amount of seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars for a topographical survey and a ten-mile bio bank stabilization program and for other purposes.
I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Oh, uh, I'm gonna go ahead. Second.
Second.
And discussion. All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? City Clerk, that passes. Could you get a number?
Uh, for the rest of the ordinance thing, I'll make a motion to read, O1 and O3 by title on it, and R, R2 by title on it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Let me, let me ask you, do, do we need to go back?
I can, I can go ahead and read R1. Uh, it's not that long.
R1 by title on it as well.
Okay.
I second it.
Second, all in favor by? Well, it's all added now, okay.
Number for R1.
R1, gonna be twenty-one eighty-eight.
All right. R2, Mr. City Attorney.
R2. A resolution recommending the issuance of municipal airport revenue refunding bonds by the city of West Memphis, Arkansas.
We talked about this in our pre-council. Financial Director explained it. Uh, yeah, the motion is second?
I make a motion that we approve this, uh, R2.
Second. And discussion.
Mayor, just to inform the public that this refinancing will, should save, you know, quarter million dollars in interest. It will not extend the terms of the bonds nor the payment. It's just, uh, flat savings on interest.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Let me see the, let me see the clerk. Can you give me a resolution number for that as well?
Twenty-one eighty-nine.
O1. An ordinance to amend ordinance number one-two-two-four, section three, regarding duties of code enforcement officer for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Um, that's on its first reading. We'll bring it back in two more weeks. O2?
O2. An ordinance to amend ordinance two-four-zero-three in section thirty-four dash thirty of the West Memphis Municipal Code to set garbage collection fees and for other purposes.
That's the first reading of that ordinance as well. It'll be back in two weeks for discussion. O3?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of two new computer units from Dell, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion to second, suspend rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of two new computer units from Dell, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Can I further suspend the rules and pay the next third reading?
Second.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of two new computer units from Dell, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
And discussion.
Okay, could you just enlighten the public what those two computers are for?
Mr. Todd, will you come up and give a brief discussion? We're gonna tell Ms. Lola she got a here kinda area.
What those are is, we're replacing, we currently have four server units in our building that operate our billing system and the payroll system and all the systems of the city. So what we're doing is replacing those four units with two units. Uh, one of them's gonna be located at our building, and then the other ones will be located at the police, so we have redundant. So if something ever occurs at either building, uh, we have backup systems. And if you start asking more than that, I'm gonna have to defer.
I just want you to, you know, just explain, give a, you know, why. But at the same time, one other person I wanted to ask, I mean, I was asked you, uh, the other day, but like the generator that we have, I mean, have we put it online or we gonna put it online? You know, you've generated by over a year.
Yeah, now, the generator's online at our building. If the city ever goes completely black, our whole campus is backed up by a generator. Uh, loss of power does not cause our facility to lose power at all because with the water system located at our facility, uh, the gas pumps at our facility, uh, that whole campus does get powered back up. Uh, the police station also has a backup generator. The main things you have to protect is, you know, a tornado issued, you know, that we hope never happens again, or a fire that could potentially happen to one of our buildings. If something happens and one of the buildings burns down, this, our systems will be able to redundantly come up, so.
I just wanted you to, just enlighten me. I don't wanna bring you back up to the city.
All right, thank you. And a further discussion? Motion is second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to second to approve section two of the emergency clause?
So moved.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? And pass it. Ms. City Clerk, can you give me a ordinance number? O3?
Ordinance number twenty-five O2.
I need to move up. We need to make a correction for some of the resolution numbers for R1 and R2. R1, resolution number would be?
Twenty-one eighty-nine.
Twenty-one eighty-nine?
R2.
R2?
Twenty-one ninety.
Twenty-one ninety for R2. Those corrections on those, uh, resolution numbers. I need permission, request, uh, permission to pay the youth clubs the division funds that we know to get from Southland. We normally split them four ways, and they're the same way that you all.
I'm making motion that we split it the same four ways.
Second. And discussion? All in favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Each club get twenty thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, I didn't get the committee reports, but we're starting.
Oh, Lord. We got that on TV, Mayor.
Yeah.
I blew her.
She, she done it.
That'd be on Facebook five blocks.
She done it, well.
I make him nervous.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Monday, let's solve your end.
Yeah, Police Commission met on March the thirtieth, I mean, on March the thirteenth, and, uh, we elected new officers, Chairman as well as Monday, uh, Lorraine Robinson is Secretary. Dating times of our meetings will be the, uh, second Wednesday of each month at twelve noon. We got an update from our Assistant Chief Langston, and, uh, violent crime unit will be back in place by the end of March. Uh, seven new people going into the, uh, the academy class. Uh, the class starts April the first, it will end July the twelfth. Uh, and now we're gonna have new police officers going in, uh, our police, uh, resource officers in East School. Uh, officers will be at East School and West Memphis School District starting March the twenty-fifth, that's after, yeah, after our break here. And, uh, our police department is short of dispatchers. We need somebody to apply for the dispatchers. Uh, our cameras, we need new cameras on, uh, on, uh, Jackson and Walker because of the increase in crime. The image of the, uh, sky cops is kinda, 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 it's not good, so we, uh, suggested that we, uh, get a license plate, uh, reader, and, uh, the license plates reader gonna cost about twelve hundred dollars for, for each one, and we gonna put them at, at different locations over the city. Uh, money from this is still in the budget for, for the license plates readers. Uh, Citizen Academy is gonna start, uh, in April, and it's gonna last for eight weeks. And the, uh, we still have, uh, several slots left for the Citizen Academy. And that, uh, that is my report.
All right. Councilman Holt, did you have anything from the parks?
No, no report.
Airport, Ms. Crum?
We did meet today, um, but I will not have an official report until, uh, our next meeting, uh, but I will say that, uh, Frank Martin came out and, uh, we discussed resolution R2, and it passed unanimously with the, uh, with the commission today, and, uh, today it passed, so we're, we feel good about that, so that's my report.
Uh, Councilwoman Hutchinson personnel, or?
We have not met, I'll get with you, Mayor, but we, I will give you an update on that. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Robinson, Public Works?
No, I reported the last time.
Oh, keep West Memphis in it then? Far?
Mayor, if I may defer to Councilor Willers. He was, uh, chair of the last meeting.
Okay.
We, uh, we met with Chief Brewer and Assistant Chief Rose, and we were reminded at that time that Dia Soul was coming the very next day to procreate places they thought were the best for the city of, uh, West Memphis to place new fire stations. We, uh, also were informed that the uniforms were being ordered to place the entire fire department into a proper dress code, which would be kinda like it used to be years ago where everyone was in uniform together. And, uh, everything went well. We got to meet pretty much all the department heads of the fire department, departments, and, uh, we were reminded once again of the condition of several of the fire stations, so the public would understand that when this all comes about and Mayor, you put everything in place and the council does, they'll be proud of what's fixing to happen. Other than that, that's all my report, and I miss Tracy.
You have anything for the Chamber of Commerce meeting? You wanna add?
Uh, at the chamber, I, I sat in with the chamber and, uh, they were, I'm trying to remember what we did. I didn't make a report up on it, but they, uh, were talking about some money. I think that they were talking about the money you had that y'all were gonna swap to some other bank, y'all were just negotiating that. Other than that, it was all positive. I think they made money last month, so that was the main thing that I do remember.
We, we've made money all year.
Yeah, you're doing good.
We got new leadership over there.
Councilman Paul, do you have something for utility?
Uh, utility met March fourteenth at eight-thirty, and, uh, uh, the safety director reported one hundred seventy-eight days, uh, without any injury, oh, the last record of injury. Five hundred and twenty days since the loss, any loss of time from the month of February. And, um, also, which we discussed the survey a minute ago, that's what, uh, the general manager got, we talked about, we talked about that as well, and approve the, uh, signing of the, uh, yeah, we approved the signing for the, uh, get the basin, which is, I guess you all have it in your, see, the basin that we're supposed to be doing, that we get in the person, take a look at. And, um, the next item that was, we, uh, approved Kentucky Rock for legal service as well to do the revision on the Y pole, Y line pole attachment agreement.
That conclusion, man. Councilman Cat, have anything for budget?
No, sir, budget will be meeting the fourth Thursday of this month. Uh, we should have a report back from the Rock office on the hearing. I don't assume they'll have any changes to the budget report, and we'll move forward from there. We'll need a budget amendment, uh, at the next meeting approved by the committee, so we can bring it back to council in April.
Does all the sheriff, uh, people give, uh, uh, city clerk the dates and times of their meetings? Yeah. And also, I wanna remind you all to give her a copy of your minutes so she can file.
I'd like to apologize to the council for the ordinance that, uh, Attorney Stevenson were reading that you all didn't have a copy of in your, uh, package, so that's what's on me. Okay.
We had no appointments in there now?
Well, I was gonna ask Ms., uh, Baylor to come up, you know, with the police department. She was trying to set up, uh, the committee meeting, so she've already, you know, set one up, and I was just gonna let her come up.
Uh, the police department, we are in the process of, um, scheduling our community meetings for this year, and the first one will be coming up April the seventeenth at six o'clock PM at Alma Park Missionary Baptist Church. Uh, we're still working on the topics that we will be discussing, but I know one of them will be talking about the new school resource officers that are going into the schools and kind of explaining, uh, why that's necessary and what the purpose of that will be. Um, so if anybody has any questions or any suggestions on topics that you all want to hear more about, just definitely let me know.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. Do you know my April seventeenth date?
Is that your birthday?
That's a great day.
Oh, well then, we'll be sure to make sure we recognize you with a card and a gift.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll take anything you got, uh, a D S President on the front of.
Okay, we'll see if we can make that happen.
Would you, would you, would you communicate with the Chamber of Commerce so that they can put that over there?
Yes, sir. Um, I actually just confirmed the date and time last night, so I'm actually working on getting the, uh, flyers and the advertisements out, so that'll be going out tomorrow.
Thing that I need to bring up, and I just stumbled upon it yesterday, um, I know they're getting ready to build some more apartments there at, um, East End, no, not East End, at the east end of, uh, Madison, uh, east end of Madison. And, of course, which I just stumbled upon it, which we passed it last year, I don't know how many people remember, but the people in that, in that area, they're, they're concerned because first of all, um, you know, that road to the, uh, it dead, it dead end, but once they build the apartments back there, that mean that, that cars start coming back out on Madison, you know, out of their complex.
Councilwoman Pulliam, what, what, where is it again?
It's, uh, Madison there, uh, the ridge.
Okay, okay, okay. That, that back?
Yeah, the back, Madison, where Madison stopped.
Okay.
They're getting ready to start building.
They're gonna, is it, the ridge is gonna expand?
They're gonna extend it.
Oh, okay.
But then, uh, I was told the road was closed because the fire department, I mean, that roundabout that was built in there was because the fire department asked for it to be built in there, but I'd like for, uh, Public Works and this council to take a look at that, and if there's any way that we could close it off, but have it so that if, um, fire department need to go through, they'll be able to get through without making that an excess road, you know, to come through that community there, because you got a lot of elderly people that lives in that community there, and that's their concern. So, you know, they need to go back out on Jackson, so I think that's something that is gonna take the whole council, I'm just saying, to make a decision on or take a look at, so. And I just really remember it yesterday, not stumbled upon it yesterday, but we passed it last year. We really did, but they just working on it now, sorry, now.
They just working, they just dirt work.
No, well, they getting ready to do dirt work. They hadn't done anything else.
I got an announcement as well, uh, for the citizens of West Memphis. I'm happy to announce that in our short ninety days with this new administration and new council, we have a brand-new restaurant that's getting ready to come to West Memphis, Arkansas, the Matchbox Restaurant will be coming here to West Memphis, one of many new restaurants that will be coming to our city over the year, so just wanna make that announcement. Uh, they're looking at Prospect on Seventh Street, close to, uh, Cracker Bear. Uh, any more announcements?
Make a motion.
Mr. McClintock want me to announce that I'm getting married?
Congratulations.
So I will no longer be Lorraine Robinson, I'll be Lorraine, you'll find out soon.
Also, we got, uh.
We got some citizen requests?
Yeah, we got two citizen requests. Uh, we have, uh, everyone know, I think she really knows one of the, yeah, me on this council real well. Ms. June Simmons, would you come forward? Ms. Simmons, would you get your name and your address for the record?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, audience. My name is June Simmons. I live at four twenty-one South Fourteenth Street, and I'm a native West Melphian, and love to be one. I have two, I'm gonna ask two things of Mayor, Council today. First of all, I'm going to do a dialogue, then I'm gonna do a monologue. My dialogue, I need Mr. Paul, Paul Lucre. Is he still here? I don't know him when I see him, to be honest. Well, I have questions that I, I want to ask Mr. Lucre. Oh, you will? Thank you. Uh, I really don't wanna start it, but he's, oh, he was still here. But anyway, I will start with this, the monologue first. I'm here to make, uh, my objection, strong objection made to the mayor and to the city council as to making any part, any part of the neighborhood center, a senior citizen center. I know when you look at me, you think, well, now, aren't you a citizen, senior citizen? Yes, I am, but I'm one that's looking for my future and the future of West Memphis to have somewhere to go and to get some help. Mayor, you were just talking a, a little earlier about, oh, here he is. Um, so, Mr. Lucre.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you for coming back. I have some questions for you. I've already started with the mayor, uh, with the council, but I am going to request a copy of the plans that you have for the neighborhood center.
Okay.
Okay? Floor plans, renovation, all of that. I'm also gonna request the budget. I need to know how much money is going in for the renovation and what kind of renovations are you planning for this?
Okay.
Then I'd like to come back with more of the community people so we can get a clear idea of what you are planning for that center. If you can do that for me, if you can do that today, I'd, I'd appreciate it.
If you want, if you, we through here, we can go to my office, and I'll show you where we at.
Thank you. Okay. Um, this is why I say this. We have children that are so out of touch today because we did not do our job. Now, I know some of you may look at this as saying, this old woman just up here saying some things, but I mean what I say. There are some things that we have to do. This neighborhood center could play a great part in helping our children with the different programs that they need that's gonna help. programs that they need that's gonna help them to grow, that's gonna help them to learn, and at some point, take care of us. We can't do that if we are afraid to do something that might be meaningful for them. In that center, there's all kind of space for all kind of, uh, teaching that needs to go on with our children. Our children want to learn. We got some children that are so talented, so smart, so innovative, but they're, they lose it because we stand by and don't attract ourselves to that. We want them to go, grow up, but in order for them to do that, we have to put something in it. That center can help us to do the things that we need to do for our children. All it takes is organization. It takes us organized, and it takes us sitting down and talking to each other regardless of how we feel about each other. We all got one thing in common, our future and what we wanna do with it. The future is out there now, killing each other, killing themselves, hurting everybody. We could do something about that. We, we could at least try to do something about that. And I think we would be rewarded in doing it by God himself, I really do. One of the things that we don't hit, uh, uh, mayor, you just talked about, uh, and I heard this, we're hiring more police officers, resource officers in the schools, okay? We got more resource officers in schools now than we have, uh, counselors. But we got counselors that are, uh, uh, here in this city that are retired, that would be willing to come out and help our children if we got somewhere to put them for them to learn. We got teachers that are retired. We got doctors that are willing to come in and do programs. We got the resources that we need here. We just have to come together and get them together. They're willing. They're willing to do this, but we have got to come. So I'm coming here to ask you to help us. We know for a fact that it can be done because we did it back in the eighties. In the, in nineteen eighty-eight, we started our first children's festival right on Fourteenth Street, right in the four hundred block, that grew from a yard, a fifty feet yard, to a block, to two blocks, to three blocks. The evening times documented us as, uh, serving over thirty-five hundred children and families in one day. So, we had the, the community involved though. We had the police department, fire department, the churches. The food was given to us by different areas around here. Coca-Cola even involved. So we had the people involved, and when you get people involved, things start to happen. Okay? So these are the things that we can say. People will be involved in the neighborhood center. People will involve their children. One thing we need to do when we start having these meetings about our children is to have our children at the table. We decide things for them, but we never let them have an input as to what needs to be decided for them. I think we, we missed the ball when we always think that we're the grown ones, that's true, but they're the ones that's coming up. So they're the ones that need to be listened to. We got things that, uh, subjects that a school don't even teach anymore. What about civic class? How can they learn how to run a community, uh, to, uh, to do anything in a community when they don't know? We could, we could have that there. We could have it at the center. You know, uh, like history classes, yes, they need to know about what happened in their lives. They need to know that. What about writing? Children are not taught to write anymore. That could be going on down there. Uh, math. You wouldn't believe how many children that are in school right now, for different reasons, can't do math. Can't do it. But there's a reason why they can't. It's called the opposite of dyslexia. Okay? Yes?
Uh, we can tell it when I'm in progress.
Oh, yeah, yeah, let me see.
I would like to say something.
Wait, just a minute, let me close it then. Okay, let me close it. My point, I get right back to it. We need to have that center for our children and for the parents of those children, and for the neighbors of those children, for the senior citizens around that need, we need it, but we need it for our community, and we need our community to pull together and do it. So, I'm finished, thank you, and thank you for being so kind as to quietly say, Ms. Simmons, you've gone over your time. I think.
I just wanted to add something to what you're saying. Of course, you know, we have four clubs, Boys and Girls Club in this community, and I strongly agree, but at the same time, that center can serve both the seniors in, in other, in other activities that we, that we want there for our children. But at the same time, we have four clubs, and when you look at the four clubs, it's just like the Southland, uh, money that we dedicate every year because, now, we give it to those four clubs. Now, I think that we need to come up with some other things that we need to put, uh, lay down that these clubs need to be doing since we're giving this because we don't have to give it to the four clubs, but we give it to them. But at the same time, I mean, you got two in the east, and you got two back in the west. And my thing is, I, you know, they could be doing more, and not only that, the faith-based organization in this community ought to be doing more. And, and, and that's, that's, that's my whole thing. What, what are the faith-based organization doing? You know, and, and I don't mind saying that, you got a lot of churches around here, I mean, to me, and I've been to them, talked to them about certain things, I mean, like festoon, summer program, well, you know, I was mentioning, let's come together and try to, you know, do one big summer program with the churches. Any response? So, I mean, my thing is, I mean, the problem is not the center, and I think that our seniors need some place to go. A, a young lady told me that, not a young lady, but anyway, she was a senior, she told me the other day, she said, I'm so glad that y'all are planning on opening it up, that'll give me something to do. I sit here every day in this house, and that'll, that'll give me an opportunity to get out. I mean, we gotta look after them as well. We, we, we can't just leave them behind. Remember, they were, they were the one that paved the way for us. And I mean, I, so, I, I understand what you're saying, but now, just to say, hey, we don't need them to have part of that center? I think, to me, that's my opinion. I, I think that they should, I, they should. I mean, we could do other activities in there as well, and not only that, we talked about some other things with some stuff that we got coming. That'll give us an opportunity to, to spread this, spread the love around, because that's the purpose that this money have been given to those four clubs, but I think that we need to, well, we talked about that last year, city attorney, uh, you weren't the city attorney at that time, but when David was here, he said that we had to be careful about certain, certain things, that the restriction that we put on them. But if we're gonna give the money, we can put the restriction there, because we do not have to give it to the four clubs if we do not want to. But we do that because we're looking for them to do what they need to do in the community. So, I mean, it's free, I mean, if you go to, uh, L.R. Jackson, well, I don't know about L.R. Jackson, but I know one, those kids do not pay not one cent to go, go to their club. Now, the rest of them, I can't say, but I know one, they don't, they don't have, they don't have to pay a membership there.
I respectfully hold out on the fact that I need to respond to Mr. James. So, instead of the time, excuse me, instead, so, instead of us going back on this again, I will be back next two weeks to continue this, if it's okay with you and the council. I ask respectfully that no one make any decisions on their neighborhood center until the community is involved in it. And with that, I thank you.
Let me see, the decision have already been made?
What decision has been made?
Last meeting.
What decision has been made? Who signed what?
Did we not make the decision at the last meeting that we had?
Let me be correct. The council voted to approve to allow half of the building to be used by East Arkansas Agency, half of.
Now, that brings up something else then. How is it that, uh, an agency from outside this county can come in and do programs where people right here in the county have to go through this?
Let me see, the decision have already been made. We made that the last, last meeting.
What decision has been made? Who signed what?
Did we not make the decision at the last meeting that we had?
Let me be correct. The council voted to approve to allow half of the building to be used by East Arkansas Agency, half of.
Now, that brings up something else then. How is it that, uh, an agency from outside this county can come in and do programs where people right here in the county have to go through this?
Well, let me ask you there, uh, uh, East Arkansas is here in West Memphis, they're not a part of the Jonesburg.
They're from Jonesburg.
No, East Arkansas is here now. They're not a part of the St. Bernard program, not anymore. But let's do this, so, someone wants to be here after council meeting, I'd love to hear from them. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Mr. Johnny Hall?
Mayor McClendon, city council, thank you for taking a few moments to listen to me about pro tennis. West Memphis tennis, twenty-five years ago, the federal government was building parks and recreations all over the country. West Memphis got six courts out at Airport Road. Then we're trying to get six more, twelve. And me and myself and then Robert Smith, who most everybody in this room knows, he helped lobby to get the other six, where the city matched the funds of the federal government for the other six. And I played the initial match on those courts twenty-five years ago. I'm seventy-one years old, I'm still playing tennis at a high level, I'm thank God for my health, that he's kept me to keep his temple, temple maintenance, that's what I call it, because your body is a holy temple of God. And he gave me the foresight to continue to be athletic and play tennis. My mother told me, she was ninety-two when she died, she had a beauty shop, Miss Louise on the east end of town. I grew up on Twenty-seventh Street. I went to Maddox Elementary. I went all the way through the system. I've been here sixty-one years in this community. I don't wanna move to Memphis. I've worked at James Davis for the last twenty-four years. I don't wanna live over there. I wanna live in my hometown. My mother would call me from Tyler, Texas, she had moved away. She says, what are you still doing in West Memphis? I said, mama, that's where my roots are. Where do I wanna, I don't wanna move. This gentleman right down here, Frankie Martin, he was my neighbor. He and I grew up together, and my sisters, I had two sisters, and my mother raised us by herself, working in that beauty shop from eight in the morning until nine at night. And a lot of y'all know Miss Lily. Miss Lily worked for my mother before she got to work for the school district. I love Miss Lily, she's ninety years old. I went to see her at Christmas, gave her a Christmas card. And anyway, we gotta move on because y'all need to know what I'm up to. Well, this is a picture of us, us, Robert Smith, myself, Albert, Alfred Sag, and one of the gentlemen worked for Jay Ernie, and the other one was our park director, and I can't remember what the guy's name is, I'm sorry. But anyway, but our courts out there, as you well know, are terrible. Everybody knows that. Over the twenty-five years, we've gone out there and we resurfaced and cleaned them up, and I taught tennis lessons out there, I played out there. I have places I can play tennis. I don't have to play tennis here, but I'd like to play tennis here. But my thinking is, is this, put six courts out there, and that's really all we need. I was a little ambitious, I said, well, maybe we'll do six, uh, you know, indoor and six outdoor. That was too ambitious. I asked my buddies that's in the tennis court making business. He said, Johnny, you're looking at probably between about four million. I said, no, that's not gonna work. So, I narrowed it down to six outdoor courts. And I, y'all have already got this in place, I, I've heard through the grapevine, that's kinda what y'all are thinking about doing, tearing down maybe the front six and keeping the back six, and then building a clubhouse where you have a pro in there or somebody to run it, maybe small locker rooms, bathrooms where people can, you know. But you look at that park, you got a fishing pond, which is fabulous. You got a walking track, which is fabulous. You got baseball fields, which is phenomenal, as good as anybody around. So, we can have six tennis courts. You're gonna have to hire a teaching pro, so he can do junior development programs for the youth coming up. You're gonna have to charge court fee like they do in Memphis. Hour and a half segments, you're gonna have to charge that. So you can have revenue coming in. You can have contract time. You can't necessarily have it for the outdoors like you could if you had the indoors, but we're not worrying about the indoors right now because we just need, we have, the high school has no place to play tennis. Mike Vinnage's son, Carson Vinnage, and Jane Vinnage's son was a state champion in the state of Arkansas for West Memphis, Arkansas. People know West Memphis for Keith Lee, Michael Cage, uh, Marcus Brown, Sonny Weems, I know them all. I'm a jock. That's what I've been my whole life, I've been a jock my whole life. I was more interested in playing than I was academics. That's why I've been in the clothing business for forty-seven years, and I love what I do. But, and then on the football side, Grafton Moore, he and I played high school football together. Bill Kestner was my coach. I'm in the Hall of Fame with Grafton and that whole bunch. I was a second class of the Hall of Fame, you know. But I played tennis back then. Me and Kestner played a match one day when he was the principal of the school, you know, and I was teasing him, and he went out there and he beat me straight sets. He never did forget it, Bill did. When he retired, he told a story at his retirement party that I gave for him at the barbecue shop in Memphis on Madison, and everybody just died laughing, you know. And I, I couldn't get a word in. But anyway, my buddy Paul Foles, who owns Strings and Swings in Memphis, he builds tennis courts, and he gave me these numbers. If you build six courts that are cost T-I-N-S-I-L-N, which is some type of concrete, it costs fifty thousand dollars a court. Now, you're saying fifty thousand dollars a court? Are you nuts? Well, let me say this, you spend the fifty thousand, you won't be going back every two or three years having to resurface those courts, and you won't have those, those two or three inch cracks in the courts where they're unplayable. He did the same thing with the city of Memphis. City of Memphis finally came around and did that. Now, the asphalt, which that's what we do, twenty-five thousand a court, but you get the cracks, they don't hold up. So, why wouldn't you rather have a court that's gonna last twenty years, instead of a court that's gonna last two, three, five years, and you're gonna have that capital investment a hundred and fifty thousand for six courts? Yeah, that's half the price, and you got some money there to do that for a few years, but, I mean, it's just no reason, we, we, hey, we may all be gone, you know, before that twenty's up. I thank you for giving me the time, and I thank my boss for letting me off long enough to come over here, and I've never done this, and I, well, I have done it, that's one.
There's, he's my buddy, you know that, but there, there's several people here, a lot, a lot of us sit around, we don't, well, what is tennis? What is tennis? But I'm like you, I played my young days, myself, a lot. It's, it's the court that, what you were talking about a while ago, you know, we're talking about getting these young people involved, it's a different thing. Everybody can't play basketball, football, and, you know, baseball.
Everybody can't play baseball and football.
You know, it's other sports, it's good too.
You know why I did it? Because I knew one day was gonna be a time where I couldn't play football, I couldn't play basketball. So tennis, you can play till you're eighty or ninety years old. I mean, get this, nine point seven five people live longer playing tennis. In cycling, three point seven. For jogging, three point two. For exercising...
quarters seven, for jogging, three point two, for exercising, one point five, that is an exact research done about tennis's pose and the other exercises.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hall, thank you.
Appreciate it, y'all have a great night.
I played, I played tennis too.
I didn't get shot at, I didn't play again after I got shot at.
I got shot at one day, Wayne, I...
Everybody got anything else?
I just made everybody ask, tennis courts one of these days, I told you that I could still play tennis.
Before I make this motion, the reason I made the motion, because it wasn't, the citizen request was not only a gentleman, so that's why I...
Jamie, would you make a motion?
I make motion, I'm drunk.
Say it, I'll say bye.